I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 12th, 2021 meeting of the Perry Township Board of Trustees. Seven PM on the meeting order. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as.
Hey, Ms. Grill, if you'll call the roll.
Trustee Wen, here.
Trustee Hartshorn.
Here.
Trustee Mears.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll make a motion that via consent agenda, we accept the minutes from September 14th of 2021. Approval of bills being paid for the time period of September 1st through 30th, 2021, which include electronic warrants, 193, 2021 through 234, 2021, and check numbers 36511 through 36567.
One second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
And I will, at this time, invite our guest, Chief Fletcher, if you would like to address our audience.
And Chief Kaiser.
And Chief Kaiser?
I didn't know he was.
My notes, so.
If there's anything you guys want to share.
Okay, I was gonna say, I didn't know I was presenting.
I'm reading off a script, sir.
So I guess if the question is about the capital improvements levy, what that would do, et cetera. So to bring it down to, to the specifics of it.
Hey, Chief, I'm sorry, could you come forward, the mics, we don't have mics in the back yet.
Absolutely.
So make sure if I can.
So the capital improvements levy, by being a capital improvement levy, you could only be used specifically by the fire departments in New Lebanon and Brookville for the purchase of capital improvements. So currently, we take in Brookville and certainly JC can explain with New Lebanon, but we set aside 10% of all monies received through the levies, and that goes into capital improvements right now. With the money that currently comes in, we have enough, and again, I'm speaking for Brookville, when I say we, we can currently replace, we have enough capital improvement money available to replace ambulances, when ambulances need to be replaced, but for fire engines, and just to give you an example, we have been very fortunate, I traveled to the East Coast just last week and was successful in finding a a fire engine that had been rotated out of service, a 15-year-old fire engine that will be added to our fleet here very shortly, again, to rotate out a almost 30-year-old fire engine that's in our fleet. And that is simply because we do not have the ability to purchase a new fire engine when one needs to rotate it out of the fleet, so we're buying that 15-year-old one. The other aspect of, and I would just say this is the importance to Perry Township, is whether folks realize this or not, because of the cost, the ongoing increase in costs that we experience running fire departments, we see our costs go up 3% to 5% every year for everything we do. That's an automatic, and previous contracts, previous relationships, the fire departments and the municipalities have just been willing to do it for whatever money comes in. And so if there was, you know, lots of folks paid their taxes and there was not a lot of delinquencies and everything was great, there was more money if it was a downturn in the economy, it was downturn, and there was also a downturn in the money that was coming in and available for firing EMS. So we're to the point now in Brookville where the general fund of the city actually has to make up about 22% of the cost of the fire problem. So the monies that are brought in by the levies do not cover the cost of running the fire EMS operations. So we have to make up for that with money for the general fund. So in the most recent contracts with the townships that we serve, and again, I'd like JC to explain any differences in what I'm saying, or correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, but we have in the contracts now that that 3% to 5% increase gets reflected in the contracts that we enter into, again, just to arrest the amount of money that is having to come from the Brookville General Fund to make up for that lack. So the importance to Perry Township with a levy like this is Perry Township's gonna have to bill, regardless of where you find the money to bring it from. Encouragement is pass fire EMS levies to cover the cost of firing EMS for Perry. It is a, it is a situation, if the contracted services don't get you any, your options is contract elsewhere or start your own fire department. And both of those are much more expensive endeavors than partnering with the municipalities to provide services. So I'll refer to JC if he has anything, certainly to add or share.
See any bad part about their cameras, they don't show the people back here.
Those have been the fire.
You know how to mute?
Somebody's not muted.
There's a button next to their name and you click on it and select. Pretends.
Attending the meeting.
I forgot that one.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, now they're on mute, sorry.
The other thing I'll add to what Chief Fletcher says is a lot of, like, post 9/11, we had a fair amount of people that stepped forward, wanted to volunteer, wanted to serve their community. As time has went on, that's kind of dwindled and dwindled and dwindled. And we're not the same fire departments that we were when I started in 1997. People weren't compensated for their time, and when you have to pay to meet the call volumes within the communities and the contracts that you serve, then that ultimately takes money away from capital items that you're projected out to purchase. With us in the situation that we're in at this point, I mean, our air packs are like 20 years old. Our, one of our tankers is a 1985. So, you know, we have tightened our belt and tightened our belt and tightened our belt through the years to help continue to provide for contracts and to provide service to our communities. And to this point, at this point, it's just the amount of revenue that is generated from the contracts is, we're exceeding that in cost overall. This is not for New Lebanon, the same held true for Jackson and their contract's not up yet. When I talked to Jackson, I told them the same thing, that there would be a percentage increase in their contract yearly. They chose to go ahead and put on a mere levy to the Perry Township levy, with the exception of that it's an operations levy. So.
And you did the same thing with Clay, correct?
Yeah, that is also part of the Clay contract as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I guess I have a question, but I was gonna save it for later. If the levy fails, as a homeowner, as a property owner, what's that means? I mean, you're not gonna come and put out my fire, does it mean I'm gonna get a huge bill for the services rendered, or what does it mean?
Sure, there were, we're both in contracts with Perry Township currently. Nothing changes with that, whether the levy passes or fails, we're still in a contract. It's just, there is a, and I don't know if one of you have that dollar amount readily handy, but there's an amount that Perry Township has to pay each and every year for that contract, and that goes up 3% to 5%, whatever that percentage is, every year in the contract. And so if the income remains flat, but the bill keeps going up, the money has to come from somewhere. Now, you know, I certainly, you know, we would not threaten it without, you know, without services. Last thing I want to do is stop providing services. I would think this is certainly an excellent relationship that we all have here. But it is, it is something that we can't continue to have the general fund make up for the shortfalls of the levy. So what happens, the trustees would be burdened with finding the money from somewhere because there's more needed for EMS, and it's, I mean, it's not indifferent than any other relationship with any other vendor. When the, you know, when the bill goes up, there's that cost, and you know, up to, up to a couple of years ago, that cost was just absorbed by other funds, well, the other funds now would have to come from the township. So it's a 3% over the life of the contract. There was additional 3% paid in 2020, 3% in 2021, additional 3% in 2022, so we have a contract through 2022 is what the current cost is. And if, you know, I would be confident that we wouldn't be entering into any further contracts without there being that percentage. There is, there is verbiage in the contract that if a levy's passed at any time during the life of this contract, then that percentage increase goes away because the net revenue would be higher than what that 3% income would be. Hopefully that answered your question, thank you.
If it doesn't pass, how is Perry Township gonna do?
We have to come up with it.
That's a good question.
What come what fun, I mean, what's your plans? It's election day in three weeks.
That's why we need the levy to pass. I mean, none of us are in favor of this levy, but it's a necessity.
I'm in favor of the levy.
And, oh, I shouldn't say that, I shouldn't say we're not in favor of the levy. We don't want to have to be in a position to do it, we, I support the levy, we do need the levy. I didn't mean to say that we're not in favor of what I should have said. We don't want to have to put people in a position where it's one or the other, whether you're backed up against a wall or you don't get a service. The services will still be there, but we don't know how we're gonna pay for it, to be frank.
And ultimately, the township is responsible to provide those services. It's not on New Lebanon or Brookville to provide us those services. It's on us to procure those services, pay for those services, and receive those services. It's what a township does, it's one of the three things that a township must provide, according to the state of Ohio.
And as residents, none of us want to be in a position where we have to pay extra. But we also don't want to be in a position where we need 911 services and can't get them because our township ran out of money. We don't want to be put in a position where we don't have enough money to exist as a township. We don't want to have to rob Peter to pay Paul from one fund to the other to the other. And the levy is a necessity for everything to continue and to get the services that we need.
Is that a possibility, that Perry Township's gonna run out of money?
Well, any township can run out of money, any township can run out of money, it's happened in the past, Madison Township was once, now Trotwood, Randolph Township is now Clayton, townships have dissolved. That can happen, is it in our imminent future? No, but is it something we want to protect Perry Township from? Absolutely, we absolutely want to do everything we can now and for our future to make sure that doesn't happen.
Is the money for the fire part come out of the trusty, the Perry's general fund or specific?
Pay straight from the levy.
Straight from the levy. But without the levy, then we have to come up with funds for it.
And that's what would happen was the additional would have to basically come out of the general fund, which would take away from other things that the township could do because we would, those funds would have to be redirected to cover the contract to maintain the services. And basically, what it equates to is with the new levy that's on there, if you have a $200,000 property, you're looking at additional $175 a year in taxes.
Any other questions? All right, Chief, thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Sure, I'll speak for JC, if there's any questions, feel free to contact us and.
And I think we're gonna try to get a fact sheet or something from y'all and put on our webpage.
Yeah, what we're gonna do is, anybody has any questions, you can either ask them tonight, or you can email them in or call in. I'm gonna touch base with both the city managers, we're gonna get, answer those questions, and then we're gonna post it on our social media and our website as well.
And you received the information I sent you?
Yes, yeah, I got all that, and that'll all become, we'll post all that as well.
Oh, two people, they're hand raised, okay, go ahead and call them out and then. Sorry, we had two. So who's the first one?
So I click on it, because I've never done this.
Just ask them to unmute by name. What's their name?
Looks like, Zach, it actually looks like it's Zach.
Okay, Mr. Music, if you have a question, please ask.
Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to ask, when does the contract for the fire services end? When is that gonna be renegotiated?
22 is the one with Brookville, I don't, do not have the contract currently with New Lebanon.
It's the same.
Are they, okay, so that is through the year 2022.
So you're saying that the contract will last through 2022, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that, thank you.
Is the other one?
That was him.
Okay.
Good times.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, have a good evening.
So that brings us to our fiscal office report.
Okay, so since last meeting, we have received the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, or the ARPA. This is the Corona local, coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund for non, Ohio non-entitlement units of government. We received in the amount of $176,348.41 on September 16th. Upon receiving that, I had to notify Montgomery County Auditor's Office and request an amended certificate. They have informed me that the amended certificate has been prepared and we will receive it by mail. With that being said, we do have to do a resolution to receipt in the funds, and then we also have to do a resolution for expenditures of how we're gonna send the funds out. I did speak with legal counsel, and they have advised of a couple of items for sure that fall under the usage of the funds. One of them is the infrastructure improvements. Any IT things could fall under that, so they, I have to come to you guys to ask you if that's something we want to use part of the funds for, that would cover the interest IT for the new conferencing equipment here in the meeting room, as well as the PC that has been talked about that is required to run it and keep it independent. And then the oasis, which is the cost to revamp our website, web hosting. The three of those are an estimated total of $8,325. If we want all three of those, or if we want to pick and choose which ones come out of those funds, you guys need to let me know what you want to do, as well as how much we would want to set for IT infrastructure aside from those funds.
My thoughts is 10%.
Set 10% aside.
10% aside, we can always, if we don't end up needing it, we can always reallocate that and make that available for how we're gonna do that.
Correct.
Or how we're gonna give those funds out through the next couple of years. I know that the maintenance garage is desperately in need of infrastructure updates, and we've been trying to figure out how to do that, and with the firehouse grant falling through, this could be something that we could put on there, because they're not exorbitant PCs, they're dysfunctional with a printer, you know, two PCs, one for the front, one for the back, and then a printer for you guys to use. And then that will finalize their, their updates for being able to do things, and that'll facilitate a number of things, including the updating and modernization of the cemetery records, which I'm sure a number of us will be contributing to, but it'll make it easier for you because we can actually level set how we're gonna approach that, what platform applications we're gonna use, et cetera, and then be able to run that out of there. So that's, I know that's probably, I think, the estimates I sent you were like 3,500 or something like that. So just because we could do that through the grant that we were trying to get with the police department, this is another way that we can do that. Or if we, if we want to, we can look at the road budget, because it's not a huge amount of money, and see what needs, you know, if there's room there to purchase those, then we don't have to do the ARP, but because we do have the ARP stuff, if we're gonna set aside a fixed percentage, I think that's, that would be money well spent.
Charity, do we need to break it all down and have resolutions for each item that we're gonna spend it on, or each account that we're going to contribute it to, how are they suggesting?
Well, they're still kind of in question with that, because I was actually on the phone with the auditor's office today. Because it's still so new, they said, of course, we would have the resolution coming in, you guys would have to vote on any expenditures that we already know, so that we can set up those appropriations. Outside of that, they're not sure how it's actually gonna play out, there's still a lot of questions in place, because I asked them, I said, can we set up just certain appropriations right now and leave the rest set in a designated fund for that? And she said, right now, just deal with what we're dealing with, bring it to you guys, you guys vote on it, and the rest of it will have to kind of play by game as we go through, yeah.
Yeah, honestly, I figured after the first of the year, we need to sit down and have, very similar to what we did with the file retention, and, and just figure out how we're, what we're gonna do with these funds, because there's a number of things that we can do with the community.
Right.
Small businesses can get infused with funds, people who had issues making mortgage payments due to employment, freezeouts with coronavirus, we can also do those as well as grants, where it, you know, there's grants, you can also do loans, but I think for the most part, a lot of the stuff that we'll do will probably be grants, where we just come up with what we're going to support, how we're gonna disperse it, and make sure we document it, and then start jumping into that probably around the end of the first quarter of next year. Because it's gonna take some planning, because like you said, a lot of the regulations around how you spend it, what you spend it on is still evolving.
Right.
So with that, we know we're gonna have some wiggle room there until things actually manifest, and that'll give us the time necessary to plan properly.
And they haven't decided yet how long we can sit on those funds, right? Like, we don't have a certain.
Like 20, end of '24 or end of '26?
Well, they've gone back and forth, I don't think they've officially extended it yet, as of right now, it's still '24, it's not been officially extended.
Last webinar I attended, they had no idea.
Right, and that's kind of where they're at right now, because the rules and what can be and can't be kind of keep changing, so. But as far as that goes, the other thing we had already discussed about that too was allowing to set a portion of the funds aside for salary, to bring somebody on to help manage it, maintain the records and stuff, everything that's gonna be required. It's a short-term payroll cost for assistance with the administration and record-keeping needs to properly adhere to the requirements set forth regarding usage of the funds. So they, and they recommend with that one that it's a percentage as well of that. And again, it's one of those things, if we don't use it all, it can be redirected later.
Okay.
And we, and we did talk about having Karen fill that role, because we were extending her hours, and that would give us the ability to offset that for a number of years.
Right, and the county said that having somebody already here that's already familiar is probably the best option, because of it being a short-term thing, most people aren't gonna want to come in for a year or two years and then just be done.
Right.
Okay.
So did we want to at least set a percentage for that, so that, because we're gonna need to start pulling from that as we manage the funds?
Do you want to draft the resolution?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, do we know the fixed percentage?
Well, that was up to you guys, we had discussed possibly, I think, most of them are recommending between 20% to 25%.
Right.
If we did 20%, that would set aside $35,269.68 to cover salaries.
Right, because it's over multiple years.
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, that, that, this is just based on the first.
The first, right, right.
And there's three?
Two.
Two.
I, I don't know, I'm thinking between 20% and 25%, probably proper. Because I'm thinking of Karen's salary and trying to figure out what that comes out to over at least two years. I think 25% gives some wiggle room there.
Okay.
Do you concur?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay, so I will need you guys to at least vote on that, and then we can build it into the resolution.
Do we need the resolution drafted, and then we vote on the resolution? Because we have to have a proposal of the resolution as we presented.
So, so, okay. So I can make a motion to the percentage, but then we would have a resolution for how, the formalizing of it. So I will make a motion that we allocate 25% of the ARP funds from the first tranche for the administration of those funds.
A second.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes. And then.
And we'll need to do the same for the IT infrastructure as well.
Right, and for the next meeting, go ahead and draft a resolution stating this is what the funds will be used for, this is how we'll do.
So I will make a motion to allocate 10% of the ARP funds for IT infrastructure updates.
A second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Okay. Also, our resolution 2158 for accepting the amounts and rates is determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor has been submitted. I received the receipt back today for the receipt on that. The LCNB certificate of deposit that we had maintained did mature because of us looking to purchase the new dump truck in the near future. Those funds were not renewed back into their certificate, they were just redeemed and put back into the general fund, or to the checking account, they have already been allocated through the appropriations for purchase of equipment. Since the last meeting, I've attended two webinars hosted by the Ohio Township Association. On October 5th, I attended the auditing of the American Rescue Plan funding. And on October 8th, I attended the fiscal officer training, building a relationship with your county auditor. And for October 18th, we do have a meeting scheduled here at the township office with Kelly Austin to review our township OTARMA risk control. And then I did just have one other question I had to ask. I know that we had talked about this in previous trustee meetings, we have had treatment done at the cemeteries, and I just need to verify that bill for all three cemeteries is $1,0586.70. We do have the funds available and what was already appropriated for contracted services for like the mowing and all of that, there are funds there. Am I okay to go ahead and pay that from those funds? There's, there's sufficient funds in there to still cover the rest of this year's mowing.
Absolutely.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Then, throw it in the cemetery.
Cemeteries, we've had three burials this past month, one on Pleasant Hill, two at Eversol. Burial this year. One on Post Ray, all three of our active cemeteries for broadly. All three cemeteries cleaned with our flowers, shepherd soaks, anything that was just around the grave sites, we did not pick up any concrete, there's like dominations dogs, there's several figurines that are off the side, benches, concrete benches. We've, we're still continuing to work on our bushes as it's fit to do that. Obamacare until October 22nd to get all the concrete figurines, benches, dogs, bowling balls, all the things like that. Get removed after that date, October 22nd. October 1st and March 1st is our reset cleanup days for the cemeteries. Those signs are posted in all three cemeteries. We are currently working on our fall foundation orders. We are currently working on our our fall foundation orders. We're gonna start uh talk about looking for volunteers to help update our cemetery books. Uh, hopefully this winter. Uh, we can put this out uh down here if we can put that out to the public. So in our uh statement tonight, uh start looking for uh volunteers.
Jane Brooks. She wants to help.
Yeah, she's she's talked several times about that. We will, Dave and I've been going through replacing missing section markers um for the plots and the graves. Um, we're working to put on new section signs and we're we're trying to get those made. Um, I met with at the end of September, met with Greg from Abbotsville Monument. Um, he's he's showing me a couple of tricks to reset headstones. Um, he's got a buggy that he resets all the headstones with. Um, when he's in this area, he's gonna call and try to get that set up with with us to try to show us a few that are set there at Landis. Um, there's some fairly big ones that are just a little bit off. We're gonna dig them out. We just haven't got there yet. Um, the roads, I'd first like to thank Clay Township for allowing us to use their one ton. Uh, ours has been getting worked on, so they allowed us to use theirs for the uh two burials we had last week. Uh, we are also working on purchasing a new, well, new to us, a used oil tank from Clay Township um for the cost of a hundred dollars. So that saves a bunch of money instead of buying a thirty-eight hundred dollar oil tank. Um, our one ton dump is it's currently not in the shop now. We just picked it up this evening right before we went home. Um, the transmission is in, Steve replaced the tie rod ends on the passenger side, fuel straps are completely uh rusted through. We actually had to hold them up with a ratchet, several ratchet straps. Um, to replace the U joints all the way through the drive shaft. Um, it was for the transmission not working properly, it would shift. Exactly. Uh, sometimes it wouldn't shift at all. Sometimes it would shift after you stopped. Uh, just several things, the U joints were were bad. Um, we also got the seat completely redone, rebuilt. Um, all the metal is completely gone out of it. We're using a board to prop ourselves up with some gloves. Um, so we got that done. Uh, that costs the for the seats rebuilt, everything is four hundred and seventy-three dollars. Um. We're going to get the yellow truck into him. Uh, he's going through Clay Township's truck now, but we're gonna get ours in there to get our our brakes and our DOT, bring it up to to standards as well. Talking about a dump truck, um, how much are we willing to spend to look at a new, a newer truck to us? So what was the amount of the CD?
The amount of the certificate. Was thirty-two thousand, nine hundred thirty dollars and seventy-four cents.
Thirty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-four cents.
Likely covers forty percent of what we would spend for a used dump with. Usable miles in good in good condition, right? Cause I know you tracked a couple of them. Yeah. And they topped out at like, what, fifty-eight, fifty-nine or sixty-four, sixty-five on a couple of them. There's for like around the forty thousand, but that's a newer truck. Uh, I mean, we've looked at several older trucks, but they're like a hundred fifty thousand miles, which our trucks we have now don't have that many miles on them. We're just, you know, they're. They're getting rusted out um for just not being able to be washed as as often as they should be. Uh, we went and looked at a truck on thirty-five from the road. It looked pretty nice, but you got it close to it and it was just a rust. It just rust everywhere. Um, the tires are just coming in the dry rot. It's we replace tires. It just. You know, where do you go? Uh, you know, probably two years ago, we could have got a fairly decent truck for thirty thousand. I talked to John Wright. Um, and he's watching gov deals and talking as much as anybody uh looking for them. Just like you said, they're 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 being expensive right now and.
Yeah. Have you looked other places besides gov deals?
Yeah, I I get on the Auto Trader, the Truck Trader basically, and then I've talked to Stoops and Wal and Walpaw and he's. Got a couple, but he's really pushing newer trucks, you know, twenty-twenty-twos and twenty-twenty-ones and. At a, you know, cost of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so.
Yeah, nope.
Just uh they're they're out there, they're just gonna be on them when when they are there, you know? So before you go on. Yeah. Let's let's stop and talk about this for a minute. So. We need to set a high bar on what our hard limit is and what we would spend on a new truck. Based on what's been seen out there and and the price that's escalating, it's still about thirty percent the cost of a brand new truck. That said. Can we afford, say, thirty-five thousand out of the road, impotensive gas tax? To pay for a truck with with the CD.
On top of the certificate?
Yeah.
I think that would be pushing it.
That'd be pushing it. So our limit is probably closer to sixty?
Total?
Yeah, sixty total.
Probably closer to about fifty to allow to have additional money still to cover the other equipment that we do have.
That will be more money in January, correct? I mean, if if something would come up.
Hmm.
Right.
They all still, they'll still need to keep a cushion also.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Just in case and with the Wolf Creek watershed and everything else coming up, that's gonna be expensive.
Just that, I mean, winter weather is gonna come here.
Yeah.
And it's probably not gonna be too nice.
No.
And we're short a truck. Yes.
Zach Music says, um, have we got an estimate to get our dump truck back in working order?
Uh, for the yellow, we we just got our our red truck back and that's up to DOT standards. Um, it'd probably be less than what we spent on the red truck, just because we use the yellow truck more often. The brakes are really the biggest issue. We just serviced the yellow truck not too long ago. Uh, right when I started in July, David just just serviced it. So it's really just adjusting our brakes and he may find more as he gets into them. Uh, but we haven't got a an estimate, a true estimate for it.
That was Zach's question.
What what was the deciding factor? That made us start looking for a new truck as opposed to fixing what we've got? Is it age? Is it?
That was, I think it was really decided before I even got here.
It was. We, they, Mike had talked about starting to look for a new truck.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Cool.
And then in the condition of the view of the trucks that they're, yeah.
We we weren't aware of the condition of the trucks.
Yeah.
Probably like prior to when Caleb was hired.
Right.
So once that happened, then there was an assessment of the vehicles, pictures were taken. Was documented what the state of each vehicle was and what their uh usefulness or that they were nearing the end of their usefulness to Perry Township. And the only problem was is that the the CD has been there for a number of years, right? Set aside for this purpose. But like you said, the cost of getting a used truck. Has inflated over the last couple of years. Quite a lot, probably about sixty percent. So our CD alone won't handle it. And uh, I think you've said before that uh the current state of the trucks. Will not do us very well in the winter ahead. So hey. We we probably could muster through it. I mean, oh, yeah. Exactly. But you know, at that point, we're basically rolling the dice on risk of an injury, of an accident. Right. Cause the vehicle is not up to the standards required for it to be on the road. Yep. Right?
My guess, my question is, what does it need to get it to those standards? And would that be less expensive than buying another vehicle? I mean, can that be done?
We just.
Is it beyond that state? Like, do we need a new truck is where I'm going with it? I know we, nobody's really questioned it because we just were in the process of looking for a truck. But is it a desperate need, not a want?
Uh, desperate need, it's, I would, I would think probably in the year to come, we we need to upgrade that one, the red truck. The yellow truck, no. I I think we can get through, I mean, it's still in pretty good shape. The the rust, the scaling on our frame of the red truck. The, I don't know what the bearings are at right now yet, a- as far as going through. I'm assuming last year when they were put away, that was taken care of. I have been proven wrong so far. I don't, I don't know about the red truck, the spreader, the auger, all that stuff. That's all replaceable things. I mean, we can work on that, but it. At what point do you just keep spending money on a truck that is?
Well, there's no question, we're gonna need the truck truck replaced.
Yes.
But the question, do we need it replaced now? Or can? No way you're gonna be able to replace this truck with now. It's gonna take you a while.
You're gonna have to find the right deal.
Yes.
And and we're just continuously looking. I I mean, I can't, I have not just sat down and spent on the computer hours on it.
Yeah.
I just have not had that kind of time to do that. So I, you know, I would get fifteen minutes at the end of the day and we'll look at it, see that kind of thing or. Just on a rainy day in the morning, try to find things. This is, you know, I haven't just spent time looking for those kind of trucks, but when they do come up. You know, I get emails now and and those kind of things. So I just, I I do look, just don't spend endless time looking. So we're at the point slightly beyond planning, right? We're getting closer and closer to execution. So we know sooner rather than later, trucks are gonna be replaced.
Right.
If we basically set, and I know fifty is not probably gonna get it done, because we haven't, I mean, there's been a few deals that have been out there and they start over that. Yep. Before they even go to auction. So. We have to. Think about this. In a way of mitigating the risk, okay? Our employees, our residents, their properties. And also the fact that the cost isn't likely coming down anytime soon. We're gonna continue to see inflation for these kinds of trucks because people aren't gonna buy new, the market is for the used ones and it's gonna go up. So. We have to look and find. A good number for our ceiling. If we've, we've got the additional tax funds coming in after the first of the year. If we say as a first quarter of twenty-two. We could spend sixty-five. It puts us in the middle of winter, demand is gonna probably put, push the cost up a little bit, but we may be able to find something good within that range. We're rolling the dice here. Right. Cause you don't know what's gonna come out, where it's gonna come from and what state it's gonna be in. You know, we may have to buy a fixer-upper. Where if we drive the price down, but then we're gonna have to spend that money anyhow on getting it up to where it needs to be.
Which is what we already have, freight is a fixer-upper.
Yeah.
So.
We, we do, but there's also uh uh issues with rust that you can't just fix up. And and that that's where the line is right now is that we've either fixed or planned to fix what is fixable on these trucks. Right now, that's where we're at. We, they've been assessed, one truck has been had the transmission replaced, some engine work done. And now the other one has to have the brakes done, but that has nothing to do with the frame, the suspension. Or or stuff like that that hasn't been fixed. So that that's where we're at. So if we say right now that, I mean, the sixty-five thousand after the first of the year. Sound like a valid number. Based on the the amount of tax money that comes in the first part of the year and the need, I mean, we're we're. You know, this isn't gonna be something that we go out there and we're just gonna get something fall in our lap. We're competing with every other township. And where we would usually be competing with similar townships, we're not competing with townships that have more money than us. So we we have to be earnest and sincere in what we're willing to spend for that. Just for an example, we went and looked at a truck on the other side of Columbus, which was a very nice clean truck. And I mean, they had every record from the day it was new. This township has, they get a new truck regardless every five years. And they, this truck had thirty-one thousand miles on it, had no oil leaks, so I mean, it's very nice. We went and looked at it. Um. John was thinking, that kind of thought in the same boat, thirty thousand. Well, the reserve wasn't met at thirty thousand and it kept going. And then typically, there's probably ten to twelve, fifteen people bidding on it and there were sixty-five bids. And it went to fifty-eight thousand. And who knows where that would have kept going, you know? And I got down to the last five people that bid and we, you know. Just it's it's a, it's a tough market right now, I think, in my personal opinion about that, but.
The vehicle market right now is a hot mess regardless.
Right. So do we feel good about a motion to allocate a top amount for this so that we can start planning for it? After the first of the year?
I mean, we're gonna have to have it right now. Like I said, most I could see us being able to do would be fifty and and I'm not certain with what the next year is gonna be for sure yet.
Right. Or we can push it till after the first of the year. I I'm not comfortable with that, but if that's where we're at, then that's what we have to do. So.
I suggest if we can. You know, I don't want the truck to fall apart on the road, obviously, but if we can. You know, baby it as much as we can, repair it. At the minimal expense, do what we can until the first of the year. And see what we can add to what we've got. Cause I don't think fifty thousand is gonna get us what we need. And I don't think we've got the funds to go above that.
I mean, personally, that's, I don't think we need to go crazy on it. Um, I mean, I would, i-if we could find a really nice truck for five, for fifteen, twenty thousand, obviously, that would be perfect and I I would be looking at that.
And if something comes along, then then that, you know, could change the game, obviously, but. I I just don't know that we can put that much out right now.
What about a dump trailer?
For cleaning the roads?
Dump truck.
Well, we do, we use a dump truck for for cleaning the roads.
Okay.
So nice.
And assault.
Yeah, that we use, and we have our one ton that we, you know, just got worked on. We use that a lot in the cemeteries. Um, and then we use it to to plow around like through Piermont and stuff like that.
Can't plow the roads with a trailer.
Right.
They're a lot cheaper those.
Yes.
Plus with having the Wolf Creek watershed.
Yeah.
Cushion for that. That's got me nervous. Um.
Well, that's the thing. I think with the truck that he was talking about is that's gonna be the biggest challenge on the equipment is. That's gonna put a lot of wear.
Strain on it.
Mm-hmm.
But is that, that's not gonna happen before the first of the year, right? At this point, Missy, that's on my, I have not done it because they keep pushing it off, pushing it off. Well, I think we're kind of facing two choices. We can allocate fifty thousand max now, correct? And cap it at fifty or wait till after the first of the year to see if we can get to sixty plus. And there may be a chance of this money that we have, that we received, our money, there may be an opportunity that we could use some of that. I don't know if we can. I'm just saying, I know that they're changing the things all the time. So there may be a possibility down the road.
So I I would be more comfortable making a motion that we allocate fifty thousand dollars.
That at least gives us where. Now.
Once the tax money comes in, we can revisit it and we can attend it.
If we haven't found something suitable for fifty or under, then we can revisit it again at the next number. Is that?
And I'm, as far as that touching base, I I mean, I, Dave has retired as a mechanic. Right. I'm not a mechanic. I know enough about vehicles in general to look at what to look at. Um, and then talking with John and Steve, he works on our vehicles. I touch base with everybody there, trying to just get a feeler. What do you think? What's what's your ideas here? It's not just me trying to make that decision.
No, understood.
Several places.
Yeah.
To see their opinions and thoughts, so.
Now, we've been talking for a very long time about needing a new truck. If the need is there, then obviously, if it's not reparable to, you know, Band-Aid it, it's gonna nickel and dime us at that point anyway.
So I'd like to make a motion that we allocate fifty thousand dollars for the replacement of one of our dump trucks.
I'll second.
Trustee when? Yes. Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yeah. But I, but if something comes up that there, he finds one for fifty-two or fifty-five.
We'll have to revisit it at that time. I mean.
Cause I don't wanna take a chance of losing something.
Right. We we can do, hopefully it wouldn't get to the point where we would need an emergency discussion.
Okay.
Okay. That is available to us.
So just to let you know that, okay. And it's already October. Yes, I know. Find it November, December, where people will potentially be using their trucks. You know, I'd like to be able to say Caleb's gonna fall into one next month.
And next, it's like Clay right now, they're they're, they were supposed to get their new truck in September. And now it's going to be after the first year. So there's potential of township trucks that are out there that just aren't. You know, put out there, right? And it may change after the first year, it may change, you know, I don't know, but we're, we're paying attention to it and and watching for that, so. Was there anything else that you had in your report? Uh, we took the old V plow, that's the Brooklyn FFA to have them paint. Uh, the seniors will paint it.
Uh, the seniors will paint it this year and then hopefully next year, the seniors can try to continue that every year. Uh, then we're going to display that at the maintenance garage. We put a farm entrance in on, uh, Farm Drive on Amity Road. Uh, we've got a fifteen inch double pipe. Uh, that's like eighty-five feet to put in on Amity Road. Um, we got our landscape trailer that we got from the police department, um, all completed. I'll put back together any boards, new, painted it, uh, put a new ramp on it. Um, it's in service. We will be getting the old red trailer on Gov Deal soon. Start picking pictures and get that on there. And then with two resumes for the full-time position that closed on Friday. So just would like to go in executive session to talk about that.
So at this time, I'd like to make a motion and according to Ohio Revised Code one twenty-one point two-two, section G one, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or composition of a public employee or official.
Second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee when?
Yes.
Trustee Mears.
Don't pause it. Hit the mute button.
Mute.
Yep.
All right, back in a flash.
Okay, we'll make a motion that we return to general session.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Mears, you have the report from our police department?
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, let's see, September stats are posted to the police department website. We hired Ashley Cress for property room clerk administration position with an effective date of ten eleven at fifty dollars per hour. They applied for a body warm camera grant and they will be applying for the firehouse sub grant on ten thirteen. And shop with the cop is on Saturday, December eleventh. And donation letters will be mailed. That's all he has.
I have something I want to read from the chief regarding something that came up a couple of weeks ago regarding the police evidence ban. So. It was, and this is from Chief Littleton. It was brought to my attention that a candidate running for Perry Township trustee made some statements at the League of Women Voters of greater Dayton. Area regarding police spending and mentioned the forensic span. The question was asked, what should be the priority of spending for Perry Township share of the American Recovery Fund? This candidate responded with, to make sure there is information throughout the township to ensure money is not being wasted on things we may not need. For example, we have a forensics van at the police department. We are a very small township with very little crime. I am not sure that it was the best way to spend our resources. Moving forward, we are taking the time to gather the pertinent information we need to spend the money appropriately. The candidate also stated, why could we not resource out to another jurisdiction? While I can appreciate the candidate's concern, this candidate has not taken the time to speak with me to understand the department needs. What does the police department capabilities are nor for the understanding of the purpose of why the van was purchased? I'd like to clarify some misinformation from this candidate. The forensic van was purchased primarily to assist with large crime scenes. Our forensic van is equipped with everything that is needed to process any crime scene from a small scene to a large scene. Just one example is the home invasion with a shooting that took place today, October twelfth, twenty twenty one. The forensic van also serves as a mobile command center if needed. The van is equipped with an onboard generator that can power essential equipment from extra lighting, radios, computers, or any other items which require power. This vehicle is also capable of transporting our equipment for riots which we have been called on. The van serves many purposes, not only for Perry Township, but it can also be used to assist other agencies if needed. Addressing, we are a very small township with very little crime. This statement is not completely accurate either. Yes, while we may be small in size, our crime problems are the same as any other jurisdiction. Take a look at the twenty twenty stats posted online. Perry Township has its fair share of crime and criminal activity. This extends from a simple speed to homicide, rapes, sexual assaults, child pornography, missing endangered children and adults, thefts, breaking and entering burglary and fatal vehicle accidents. While some of these do not occur every single day or multiple times a day, does not mean the police department should not be equipped to respond to a call for service when a resident calls for assistance. So, and that was all that the chief had written on that topic.
For the police side, I need a motion for Ms. Cress for where he had hired her for the fifteen dollars an hour effective date. Effective date was on here, ten eleven of twenty twenty one at fifteen dollars an hour for Ashley Cress.
C R E S S, I'm making that motion that we hire Ashley.
One second.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right, moving on to our trustee reports. Oh, one more? Sorry, Karen.
That's okay. I've been working with Caleb on cemetery deeds and cemetery log updates. So we've been working on that quite a bit. The trash bills were mailed out September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. In zoning, there are two nuisance abatement hearings scheduled for October. One is Thursday, October fourteenth at three P M. And the other is Thursday, October twenty first at three P M. And there will be more nuisance abatement scheduled in the near future. I'm working on the Ohio Department of Agriculture twenty twenty one easement inspection and report due by December thirty one of twenty twenty one. And I've already sent out the letter to the owners to set up a time for me to come out and do the inspection. Also, trustee Mears and I are working with Susan Garbell from Montgomery County Landbanks regarding the properties in Paramount. And I'll let trustee Mears speak more on that. I've scheduled a B Z A hearing on a farm split for Thursday, November fourth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. Since the last trustee meeting, there have been three permits issued, one about ground pool and two pole barns. And there are six pending permits as of right now. And I bet I did get one more today, so that would be seven. And that's all I have.
Okay. Now, moving on to the trustee reports. Kind of off a little bit on mine now because Chief Littleton's letter actually covered something that I had planned on saying. I want to commend our police department on a fabulous job this morning on an event that took place on Diamond Mill. Our evidence van was used and it's an important tool that we have. You know, I trust Chief Littleton implicitly to make decisions for his department based on need. When it comes to things that our police department doesn't have, it's because we have been small. And we haven't had the opportunity to get them yet. But we are moving into scary times where there is crime. And our township does have a lot of things happening, not just crime, but public assistance. And I just wanted to say kudos on a job well done and congratulate everybody on the growth that our police department has shown in the past couple of years. I also wanted to say, I'm very excited about the work that's taking place with Susan Craybill and the land bank on the zoning issues. A lot of people have been questioning what's going on in Paramount. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, Jason and I came into office early twenty twenty and started doing what we could do on the promises that we made, and then everything shut down from COVID. So over the past year, we've really run hard to catch up on things. And now things are happening and good things are happening and progress in Paramount will be made. Progress is being made and I commend Karen again. She's a bulldog for getting on all of these properties with abandoned vehicles and garbage and unmoated grass as well as junk tires and walls falling down. So again, you know, kudos and folks bear with us. It's a work in progress. I attended the tornado disaster relief closing celebration sponsored by the Dayton Foundation. It's very moving, very emotional event where all of the jurisdictions impacted by the tornado, all of the volunteers that worked on it, all of the different agencies that came forth, everybody came together and we were able to get some closure for that. I was a little late and not with the whole group, but I attended the law enforcement memorial that was at Riverside. Already mentioned that, already mentioned that. The only other thing I had on my report was to reinforce how important the levy is that we really need that to pass. We are really put in a position where we want to be able to say we have great support from our fire departments and they've always been very good to our townships. We don't have to have those particular fire departments by any law or any statutes or any revised codes. But they have been more than good to us and the least we can do is, you know, keep them where they need to be as well. So that levy, we absolutely need to vote for that levy when it comes up. Other than that, lots of webinars as usual. The cemeteries were cleaned on October first. Is that correct? The third, okay. Couple of folks have called and had some questions as to where their flowers went. If there are any questions about that, please get in touch with Caleb or any of us and we'll be happy to tell you what's going on. There are two dates posted at every cemetery and the flowers will be cleaned on those dates. Otherwise, I think everything else got covered.
Okay, so I've continued to update and maintain the website, social media and digitization of documentation for the township. Been working with Oasis on the website design reviews. We've had one and we're coming up on another one. Worked with the purchase and setup of Office three sixty five on the lobby PC. So now the other trustees email is being archived there and they don't have to worry about it. And we have tools there to be able to do Microsoft Office as well as a few other things that we need to do in our day to day township sport. The meeting room, A V update, the hardware has been on back order. We're getting some movement there. I spoke with Oasis today and they said, once we acquire the PC that's required, which it sounds like we're on our way there, we'll be able to do that with the ARP funds. Then they will come out and they will install all the brackets for the speakers, the cameras, as well as for the PC and get the PC configured to use all the hardware. So that will be scheduled. I will be making that purchase this week if everything clears out like we think will. And then I will schedule that with them to have them come out one more time to finish up the install. Continued the weekly driving inspections of township roads, cemeteries and nuisance properties. I attended two OTA webinars this month, one trustee training on bringing broadband into your community and one on auditing of America, of the American Rescue Plan funding. I've also met with, well, and I met with Oasis on web development reviews. I do want to say that I need to make, we need to make sure that all department heads and elected officials are reviewing the link that has been made available of the current in development new website. See what's there. If there's something you like, if there's something you don't like, if the colors make your head hurt, if this print's too small. The link will take you to a multi-view which allows you to see it, what it looks like on a desktop, what it looks like on a tablet and what it looks like on a cellphone. So you can simulate all of that on the, on your PC if you wish. So please review those and give me any thoughts or inputs that you have so that I can make sure that I get those in the, in the, in with Oasis for them to address. The last thing that I wanted to address was something that has been eye opening for me since the day I decided to run for trustee. I remember when I was running for trustee, I was asked over and over and over again, do you even know what CAUV means? And I did not. I was aware of what it was. I wasn't aware of the process necessarily or its impact to our township. Our township has the second highest number of parcels for CAUV in Montgomery County. We have five hundred and seventeen parcels with a total acreage seventeen thousand two hundred and twelve acres at a total value of twenty nine million, two hundred and sixty one thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Of that amount, the current CAUV rate is eight percent. There's a lot of talk in this township about we won't pay more taxes. We won't do this. We won't do that. We love our farmers in Perry Township. We do. We're not Perry Township without them. But at the same time, programs like CAUV do take tax funds away from the township that makes it impossible for us to fully collect taxes on, for the fire department, the police department and for the day to the operations of the township. Oh, it does. Oh, no, I'm not. Oh, I'm sure you could, but so can the county. And I've got this from them. I am so happy for you, but this is not your time to speak. So I will leave these up here on my, on the table for people to review after the meeting. This is a serious time for this township. It really is. And we've been making a lot of progress. But at the same time, we haven't been paying our share for services we've consumed from other municipalities. We have to do that. And that's why this levy is important. This is why we can't just shake our fingers at the taxes and go the other way. This is something that needs to be addressed for the township. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
There was a comment made. It was, I think it was from Ron, when it says this is a much better audio than has been in the past.
Thank you.
Okay, so I attended the law enforcement memorial ceremony at Riverside and I just have to say, I, it was an honor and very, very emotional for me. I also attended the meeting at the Dayton Engineer Club. Met with Ms. Kaler and Susie from the land bank. We were out there a good forty five minutes to an hour. We looked at two of the different properties. We have been in contact with them. Susie has been out again yesterday. We have a possibility of an anonymous donor that might help, help us tear these buildings down where they, we pay half, they pay half, or we pay percentage or something like that. That's what we're working on right now. I was in contact with the state fire marshal about the tanks underground and so with Susie, which she's doing the majority of this. So that's an ongoing process with me and Ms. Kaler. I also have had several residents call regarding items missing at the cemetery. I've checked with Caleb and we were able to solve one of the mysteries. Again, waiting on public health department and and in any information for the fire levy, like we stated with the fire chiefs being here, we will be posting that information on our website and Facebook regarding the upcoming fire levy. And we'll get that to you. According to them, they're supposed to get some kind of fat sheet and charities working on that. So as soon as we get that, we'll get that out. And I know they're open for any kind of comments or anything like that, if you want to talk to them. And that's all I have.
Okay. So I just wanted to catch up on some old business. Missy just pretty much took care of the land bank involvement regarding the Paramount buildings, which is finally a work in progress. Where do we stand currently on our records retention policy?
Still working on it. Got some clarification as to some of the questions we had, basically the wording and if a lot of this stuff was repetitive. Just with everything been going on with trying to get the fire levy stuff, the ARP information and stuff going, it's just been kind of a slow process with the retention policy.
Okay, do we have a timeframe that we had to have that done by? Because I thought we were, no, just that it just needed to be updated because it hadn't been, okay. Marketing of the fire levy, there are signs available for anybody who would like to help promote the fire levy. And anybody that is willing to help market that, to help get it passed, it is significantly important. We are going to have the data fact sheets printed up soon. And like Jason said, we'll get it on the website. Missy, we don't know where we're at with the Wolf Creek watershed.
I have not heard from Vic. Have you? I have not heard a word.
Should I reach out to Vic or do you want to call? No, we're just going to wait?
Yep.
I have asked, I mean, I sent an email to him asking questions and I've not had a return back, so.
Okay. Well, I mean, I guess it is what it is and yeah.
I think from the meeting that we all had, we're at their mercy as then, and he doesn't even know until they come through and say, yeah, we kept last minute.
He's at their mercy, whoever.
Yeah. Well, they, the federal government, some level, so, hmm, okay. The cemetery grant and repairs, is that a grant in progress?
No, we didn't get it. We returned that money.
That's what I thought. Okay, just making sure. So when, at what point can we reapply? Or is that going to be?
It's only a thousand dollar grant and the work we have to do at Pleasant Hill is much more than a thousand dollars. We have to remove the arch and we have to remove the fence and deal with all that, so.
And that's something that this ARP money might be able to help.
And that's where I was going with that is can we get that grant and put additional funds or apply for the grant if we get it, put additional funds towards it?
No, she's talking about the ARP.
ARP money.
Yeah, well, can we put the ARP money toward, if, if we get the cemetery grant, do we have to only spend a thousand dollars on the specific item?
They only give a thousand dollars. That's all that.
But we can't.
Right. So you have to basically go in with, this is what we're going to do.
Okay.
Spend the money to get it done and then complete it.
We, we can't double up.
No.
Okay, that's where I was going with that. I was hoping that we could, you know, put that towards a coffer, something, but we can't do that. Okay. And then the wetlands project, once again, Missy, you were the last.
Let's see, I got information on that. They were, let's see, I'm trying to. It's been decided that they're moving forward with the project. The project design is far from set in stone. They're going to start bringing in some equipment. They're excited about the partnership with T N C. I'll get this to charity and you can put that in and anybody can read this. We can put this on the website so we can share it with those residents. Basically, that's it. They're going to start whatever they're going to do. Estimated time for the project includes site assessment and design continue through twenty twenty one and likely first half of twenty twenty two.
Okay. And the last I had spoken with somebody, the location of the parking lot was not set in stone.
No.
And that they are going to finish the project before deciding where the parking lot will go.
And nothing said.
And I have expressed that there were quite a few citizens that were not happy with what was proposed.
Right.
And they were hearing that. They were, they were listening.
Yep.
Okay, so we're up to speed on all of that. Don't have anything on new business. Jason?
I don't have any business.
Nope. Okay. Moving on then, are there any visitors that have signed up that would like to speak about anything or any questions?
Do you still have questions, Mrs. Wells?
No, my questions were answered.
All right. So that brings us to Mr. Sim.
Yeah. I will address what you just said. I've worked with that CAUV for thirty five to forty years. I do know the program. I'm glad you became an expert in two years of not knowing about it.
I'm not an expert, but I know where they are.
I know, I know some of the facts you're telling are wrong. Your, your home is not based on what's an industrial site radius and same as my farm and everybody else's farm. It's not based on housing rates. It's based on what it's used for. That's what CAUV is. And it's not that there's taxes not being collected. It's based on what it's used for and that's the way it's taxed. And the way it's over a several year period, it has often worked out to where the taxes remain more stable than what it has. If it be the fluctuation otherwise, township, schools and places would be in a hurt. Ohio Farm Bureau will tell you that as long and as well as Montgomery County's auditor, because I worked and he had me on some committees because I didn't know the program. He asked me, matter of fact, last fall beyond one, but then it COVID all hit and he didn't have it, so. The other thing I wanted to just tell you was it was brought up at this meeting last month that the investigation about the past trustees, the past financial officer, ongoing investigation. That investigation's been closed. I got an email from the state of Ohio saying it's been closed. That involved the investigation of the office, the computer, the search warrant of the house. And it said, yes, there was an investigation open, but that investigation has been closed. So just so the public knows that, that's, that's where that stands. So I think that needs to be brought out.
Well, I'm very happy that they contacted you and didn't contact anyone sitting here.
Sometimes you got to ask. So that way the public knows.
Yep. And Mr. Lewis, something you wanted to say? All right, excellent.
Can we not close yet? Just a minute. Can we, can, can you hold?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that what the final thing?
That's, that's what they put in here was that the current rate was about eight point ten percent. Of the actual tax value of each acre. That's completely separate. Yeah, they, they didn't cover any of that. This is just. The impacts of the C A U V to the townships and municipalities that have the farmland.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Be good.
Yes.
So if there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Wen?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you coming out to me. At the recording.